What? I'm admitting those and. We're out of the waiting room. You're good to go.
Calling to order the Monday, April 5th, 2021, regular meeting of the 38th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker. Councilmember Blanchard.
Here in Berkeley.
Mayor Protem Dean.
Here in Berkeley.
Councilmember Gavin.
Here Berkeley.
Councilmember Henin.
Here Berkeley.
Councilmember Price.
Here in Berkeley.
Mayor Turbrack.
Here in Berkeley. Our first order of business is the approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Support.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Blanchard with support from Councilmember Henin. Are there any changes or additions? Seeing no changes or additions, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on tonight's agenda?
Blanchard.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henin.
Yes.
Price.
Yes.
Turbrack.
Yes. At this time, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge with us today. Our reporter on the streets, Pastor Adam Grow.
Appreciate that. Let's pray, God, we thank you for this beautiful day that we have, beautiful Easter weekend that we had. Thank you for Easter and all that that means to so many people, a season of hope and love and new beginnings. And so we're thankful for that, but God, we need hope and and new beginnings right now. There's a lot of people suffering in COVID right now. I know a lot of Berkeley families some in the hospital right now. And so we just pray that you would bring healing and and hope to them. We pray that we as a community can unite around them in in this difficult season. God, we just pray for this meeting tonight. We pray that you would give wisdom and discernment as the city council meets tonight. We just pray that you would move through the meeting and the outcomes would be good for this city. Pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have now come to our first public comments section of the evening. Again, this is for items that are included on tonight's agenda. Council members will not engage you in discussion, but if your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or Department of the City, please email the clerk's office at clerk@berkleymich.net or call the clerk's office at 248-658-3310. If you would like to comment and were in the meeting, please raise your hand either virtually or just raise your hand on the screen and you will be recognized. If you are not here and want to dial in, please call 1-312-626-6799 and you will be recognized by name or number. When you speak, please state your name and city of residence and remember you will be limited to three minutes.
I'd like to make a comment.
Your three minutes starts now, Amy.
Thank you. So I'm Amy Keeley. I live at 1889 Columbia Road in Berkeley. I'd like to make a statement for the record. Despite catastrophic damages to my property due to failures by the city during the permit process, the city has begun treating me as if I am the enemy, not the victim of significant property damaged by the builder at 1895 that even predates his construction project. I have had no response from city council, in particular Dennis Henin or Ross Gavin, since December 12th, 2020, which is almost four months of absolute silence, and the city manager since January 7th, 2021, which is almost three months of absolute silence. All have been included on emails except for the sidewalk safety violations recently by the builder that included the building department and the city manager. Not even my safety complaints or code violence do I get the courtesy of an acknowledgement email as a US citizen and as a Berkeley resident. The only official who responds to me is a city clerk for my FOIA request, and I do thank Victoria for that courtesy. The rationale provided for their passive silence is concern that I may sue the city. I have in fact stated publicly and privately that I have no intention of suing the city. So I wanted to reiterate that for the record. I also, for the record, want to remind the city council and the city officials of their oath of office to uphold the US Constitution and the Michigan Constitution as elected officials by their citizens who are duly elected by them to be their voice in government to ensure their protections. In my case, they have failed in their fiduciary responsibilities to protect my property. In what appears to be a sexist approach to the city to believe that their male statement of work building official through McKenna versus a female resident, I have hired expensive male experts to validate my concerns and they have. So this, because of this lack of etiquette, ethics, and just overall ethos of care for residents with damage due to the city's permit process that does not allow follow state law, including our 3307.1 for the protection of adjacent properties. I've established two websites where the city can go to find the factual information, including the photographs that I have collected through this entire process. One is bighousedisaster.com and berkeleycityfailures.com, which will be published mid-April for factual information on what has occurred to my property for the protection of other residents because of all the new bills that are going in and that the fact that state law is not being followed and even Berkeley city codes are not being followed, in particular the tree ordinance, the tree location surveys, and tree protection surveys. Thank you.
Thank you. Not seeing anyone else at this time?
We'll give another minute while we're waiting. Ms. Mitchell, did you have any other communications to be read into the minutes?
I do not.
Okay. As a point of privilege, I see that we have State Representative Regina Weiss with us this evening. Regina, are you there?
I am. Thank you.
Normally, obviously, this would be for items that are not included on tonight's agenda, but we will certainly make some time for you right now. Whatever whatever's on your mind, Ms. Representative, please let us know.
Thank you. I just wanted to stop by to greet everyone and give a couple of updates about what's happening in Lansing. A few things. There recently, as of the, in the, within the last two weeks, the legislature has passed two separate bill packages. One to, one with a lot of sweeping healthcare reform focused on lowering the cost of prescription drugs and another one focused on increasing transparency within state government. Both of those packages did pass through the House and are now on their way to the Senate. So that is some good news and some bipartisan good news that's coming out of Lansing. So currently, for those of you who don't know, Michigan is one of the worst states in the country when it comes to transparency in state government. And so a lot of the legislation that passed through the House, if it also passes through the Senate, will help remedy a lot of those issues. Also, I know today is the first day back for Berkeley schools and for many districts from spring break, and there's a lot of concern around the spike of COVID, spikes in COVID, and also there have been a lot of cases of outbreaks within school districts. And there's been concern about that in regards to ties to funding in order requiring face-to-face learning. And I just wanted to let everyone know that a few weeks ago, I did introduce a bill, House Bill 4570, that is meant to untie those face-to-face requirements from the funding so that that COVID relief funding can get out to schools immediately with a simple up or down vote without requiring any kind of strings to requiring face-to-face learning or not requiring face-to-face learning. And also, any other, any other tie bars or strings tied to the bill that require the governor or the health department to relinquish some of their authority in order for that funding to go out, which the last bill that passed through did, did require. So this would allocate, this bill would allocate all of the federal Title I dollars for COVID relief that have come through as well as all of the additional S or dollars to get each district a minimum of $450 per pupil without, again, requiring any kind of, any kind of specific hours of face-to-face learning to give districts the most flexibility possible. You know, amid this public health crisis, as numbers go up and down, we want to make sure that districts have flexibility and we're not tying those decisions to funding. So I just wanted to give that update, and I know this is not back and forth time, but if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Representative Weiss, and I will allow questions if you do have questions for our representative. And while council members are thinking about that, thank you for being proactive and as active, I guess, as you are in trying to make sure that not only the cities, but the school districts are able to continue operating in a safe manner and not have to make decisions that may or may not be tied to budgeting, which obviously has a significant impact with all of the question marks as to what the budgets are going to look like, not only this year, but also in future years because of the impact of COVID. I do think there is a school board meeting that's probably going on today, talking about some of those similar things this evening. Are there any additional questions for our representative? Councilmember Price?
Yes, thank you, Representative Weiss. Very grateful to have a former council member, municipal leader, and a teacher representing us in the House. Is there anything that our residents and or us as elected officials can do to help support your House Bill for, do you say 45, 44570?
It's hard to remember those numbers, 4570, yep.
4570, thank you. What can we do to help support it and give it a better chance of making it through?
Well, right now, the, the bill has been sent to the community appropriations. I said on appropriations. In order for that bill to move forward, it would need to get a hearing, and the person who has the authority to grant the hearing or not grant the theory, grant the hearing is Chair Albert, Thomas Albert. And so I don't have his information in front of me, but you, if you look up Thomas Albert in the state, in the State House, he's the Chair of Appropriations, you could contact his office and request that that bill be given a hearing because we do need to get those dollars out now. And I'm also in the, I'm also, we're also in the process of not only dealing with these past appropriations that has still not been appropriated and within just our district itself. So including the communities, including the districts, school districts of Berkeley, Ferndale, Oak Park, and Hazel Park, which are the four districts within the 27th District. That they, there is already, I think, believe it's over $10.5 million that are waiting to be appropriated from that, that second round of federal funding. We have another round of federal funding that we're going to have to also allocate that's come through in addition to also budgeting, moving into the budget for, for the next, this coming fiscal year, which starts soon, and school districts need to have those dollars known by, ideally by the beginning of June. And so we're kind of doing all of these things at the same time, and we're still dealing with dollars that still haven't been allocated yet that should have been allocated a long time ago. And some of these dollars have expiration, have an expiration point on them. So it's really critical that we get these dollars out now, especially right now when, when cases are spiking and districts really need that relief in order to make sure that kids can be in school safely. So I am, I am working with, I sit also on the school aid subcommittee and we're, I've been in discussions about what we can do to get some of that, some of that federal dollars, some of those federal dollars out that should have already been allocated out as well as what the next year's budget is going to look like. So those discussions are happening, but I think definitely reaching out to Chair Albert and requesting that that bill get a hearing is really critical.
We'll definitely do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions for our representative? Well, Regina, again, thank you for being with us, and we all know that we do have a great lines of communication to you and your office, and we certainly appreciate that, especially as we continue fighting here and making sure that all residents of, of the state are safe, certainly watching out for our residents and everybody in the 27th District and helping to give you as much feedback and support as we can to work to achieve those goals. Thank you very much.
My pleasure. And, and just really fast, if anyone needs to get in touch with me who's listening, my email is regina Weiss@house.mi.gov and my number is 517-373-0478. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mathis, anybody else? All right, seeing no additional public comments and nothing else to read into the record, we will move on to this evening's order of business. First up is our consent agenda. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
One, approval of the minutes, matter of approving the minutes of the 38th regular city council meeting on Monday, March 15th, 2021. Two, proclamation P821, matter of celebrating the 149th anniversary of Arbor Day and designating the week of Sunday, April 25th through Saturday, May 1st, 2021, as Arbor Week. Three, proclamation P921, matter proclaiming and recognizing the volunteers of the City of Berkeley and declaring the week of Sunday, April 18th through Saturday, April 24th, 2021, as Volunteer Week.
Turn your mics off.
Again, is there a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda?
Some moved. Support.
Motion made by council or Mayor Protem Dean, I should say, with support from Councilmember Price. Are there any changes or corrections to our consent agenda? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on tonight's consent agenda?
Dean.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henin.
Yes.
Price.
Yes.
Blanchard.
Yes.
Turbrack.
Yes. We now move on to this evening's regular agenda. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number one?
Motion number M2121, matter of awarding the cross connection control program to HydroCorp located at 5700 Crooks Road, Troy, Michigan, for a three-year term.
Is there a motion to approve M2121?
Some moved. Or?
Motion made by Councilmember Henin with support from Councilmember Blanchard. Mr. Baumgarten?
Good morning, Mayor. For those not familiar with the term cross connection, it merely makes sure that at commercial businesses as well as residential biz, or homes, that there's not an instance where non-portable water can mix with anyone's drinking water. So on behalf of the City of Berkeley, we've utilized a contractor for several years now to meet the state requirements for this program. And the, the expiration date for our current agreement is approaching in April of 2021. And so in advance of that, Derek Schuler and the Department of Public Works went out to bid for a contractor and is making the recommendation that stands before you this evening. You're joined by Public Works Director Derek Schuler as well as a representative from HydroCorp, the recommended vendor.
Mr. Schuler, good evening. Any additional light you'd like to shed on us?
Absolutely, and thank you, Mr. Baumgarten, and good evening, council. So before you tonight is our recommendation for award to HydroCorp for cross connection services. And this does apply to both commercial and residential homes, and it is a requirement for us from the state to protect the potable water system. And HydroCorp was the low bidder last time we went through this back in 2016. And this time, we went out to bid, they were the only bidder. But I am happy to report that the pricing that we received is identical to the 2016 bid, so I was happy to see that. And we're recommending award to HydroCorp to continue these services in the City of Berkeley. Paul Patterson from HydroCorp is joining us tonight. Paul, hopefully you can, you can hear me. Are you there? Paul, you're on mute if you want to unmute. There you go.
Yes, Derek, hi.
Thank you for joining us, Paul. I'm happy to answer any questions from council.
Questions for Mr. Schuler or Mr. Patterson this evening? Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. Derek, has there been any conflict between any, with the residents or with the businesses on this, this program? Have we had any, any concerns by them raised? Or I haven't heard much about it, that's why I'm concerned.
Yeah, the councilman, there, there really hasn't been many issues. There have been a couple of instances where I've had to get involved in final notices to commercial businesses that haven't responded to written notice. But I'm happy to report that all of them ended up complying in the end, so we never had to turn off the water or move any further with that. Paul, are you aware of any other issues from, from your side?
No, it's, it, the program's been very smooth for the last five years. There's been no real issues with any of the residents or, or business owners.
Okay, well, thank you. Now I have a couple of other questions. I looked at the, the information that was sent out, and it says inspection reschedule one, inspection reschedule two, inspection reschedule shut off. You know, I'm sure those, that's good data, but I don't know what it means.
Go ahead, Paul.
So the reschedule notice is a letter that we send. When we schedule a facility for an inspection, we send a inspection notice to let them know when we're coming. It also allows them the opportunity to call and schedule a specific time. Now, if we don't hear from a business owner, then we will just show up that day. If they are not available or they refuse the inspection for any reason, they would get a reschedule notice. Essentially, they go into non-compliance for not allowing or, you know, allowing access or allowing the inspection to happen. Which would just trigger, we usually send two, and then that third, I know it says shut off notice, but all those, all those go to Derek and his staff. We don't send those directly to the water customers, so that's really the compliance component or the, you know, if someone refuses to comply, that's usually a step and typically, and Derek can correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think anybody's water's been shut off. I think they usually comply when they get that letter.
That is correct. I get involved at that point, which I don't really like to do, but I have to do it from time to time, and so we hand deliver final notices to the property. I also send certified letters out and regular mail, so it takes a little bit of extra effort. But I'm happy to report that each time that we've done that, we've received positive response, so we have not had to turn off any water.
On notice, on inspection reschedule shut off, there's only been three of those. But then in the next category, it's, it's noncom one, noncom two, and noncom shut off. Is that, is that the same thing, or what does that, what does that mean?
Same process, a little different type of letter. So the comply, that's a non-compliance letter. It essentially means what we did an inspection, we completed the onsite survey, and there was maybe some issues inside that facility that needed to be addressed. So we would send them a, a first non-compliance letter detailing exactly what they need to, to do to be in compliance with the program. And again, it's the same kind of process. We typically give them 30 days. If we haven't heard from the facility owner or the homeowner, we would send a second non-compliance letter with the same requirements. And then usually the third, third go-round, that's when Derek gets involved and we send the, the shut off letter to him and and his staff goes out and knocks on the door and usually gets things moving.
Now, you have a third category, says testing one, testing two, and testing shut off.
Yep. So the, the testing portion is for testable backflow prevention assemblies. They're required to be tested periodically to make sure that they're working properly. So again, that's the same process. We send a letter informing the owner that that assembly is due for testing. We typically give them 30 days to have it tested and a completed test report submitted to us. In that 30 days, if we haven't heard from them, again, they'd get that second letter and then it would move into the shut off.
Well, thank you. That makes a whole lot more sense than the report that we received here, with, with the column of the numbers in it. One more question. Are you still using the fourth edition October 2008 manual? Is that your standard?
I believe that is the last updated manual.
Okay, that's what I've been reading. Okay, I want to be sure I'm reading the latest one.
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Additional questions for Mr. Schuler or Mr. Patterson? It appears that's a pretty consistent three strikes and you're out across the board as it relates, just like the Tigers today. Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a quick question, yeah, about that timeline. So from inspection to Derek, you getting involved, is it 30 days for each once? Are we talking about like a three-month timeline before you may end up getting involved, or is there a shortened window after that first letter?
Yeah, Paul, maybe you can elaborate on this. I, it's often even more than 30 days, isn't it?
Yeah, so the, the first two letters provide a 30-day compliance time, timeframe. So you're at 60 days by the time shut off notifications go to the city. And that's usually, I believe, a two-week letter, so it shortens the timeframe of 15 days. So in, in total, a facility or homeowner would have up to 75 days.
Okay, thank you very much.
And if I could, Mayor, that one other thing I want to add is one other challenge related to this is the fact that at least commercial businesses, the tracking of owner information can change, as we all know, and keeping track of that is a real challenge these days as, as property owners flip. So that's part of what we get involved in is, is when we're not hearing back from folks. That's a check that we do internally at the DPW to see if we can track down if there's a brand of property owner change or something else that may have be the reason why we're not hearing back from somebody. So that's a big part of this as well. Unfortunately, that's something that we're just going to have to deal with, that that will always be around as we, as we move forward with the program.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments? Well, aside from our past history with, with HydroCorp, obviously you can see in the references that many of our neighbors as well use them for the commercial residential cross connection control program management as well and inspections, which also, again, as we talked about, gives us confidence, not only for us knowing that we're doing the right thing, but that our neighbors are also using this company because of the comfort and the care and the process that is used as well. Seeing no additional questions or comments, Mr. Patterson, I do thank you for being with us this evening and availability to answer questions. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on M2121?
Gavin.
Yes.
Henin.
Yes.
Price.
Yes.
Blanchard.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Turbrack.
Yes. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number two on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M2221, matter of approving the City of Berkeley fund balance policy.
Is there a motion to approve M2221?
Some moved.
Support.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Gavin with support from Mayor Protem Dean. Mr. Baumgarten?
Good morning, Mayor. A couple of our council members over the years have asked about developing a written fund balance policy. It's a fantastic idea. In fact, I've been asked to pass along those sentiments from Plant Moran. Not a lot of our, our neighboring communities have taken this step. So Plant was quick to applaud city council for even considering this. The text of the draft you have included in your packet as one that I've, we volleyed back and forth a little bit. We've shared a couple of drafts that staff's been working on for a while. It's been reviewed by both myself as well as the finance director. And we believe it sets realistic and achievable goals and sets a range that we believe, that staff knows that we can live within. The policy itself has three different sections, a definition section, which I know that these are terms that we're familiar with internally. But anybody that doesn't work with these terms on a daily basis can take a look at this policy, understand what's being referenced without having to go to a understand what's being referenced without having to go to a separate source to, to review the meaning of some of these terms. It lays out clearly what our ranges are. And then there's a note at the end on how staff would comply with some of those with the policies that are set as well. The two most frequent instances where this is going to come into play would be, of course, during the budget process. But also as we do the periodic budget amendments throughout the year, we tend to do those quarterly. So we'll be able to note for you the effects on unassigned fund balance. And we specify that unassigned because that is the portion that we would most realistically think of as a rainy day fund, if you were trying to make a comparison to a, to a home budget. This is an area that doesn't have a specific purpose, but exists to address instances of emergency. You know, surprise pandemics that pop up from time to time, things like that. Otherwise, we'd be talking about assigned fund balance, committed fund balance, some of the different accounting terms. Where we're purposeful in saving for specific projects or desired outcomes. So essentially what this does was set a minimum of 20%, a maximum of 40%, but urges the city to live within 25 to 35%. What that translates to is roughly a three to four months of operating budget for our general fund. So again, we believe this is realistic and appropriate for our size. I referenced in the memo some hard numbers on what effect this would have had had it been in place last year for the audited budget for the fiscal year that ended on June 30th. So again, putting those, putting these into real practice here for you. And I'm certainly available for any questions as well.
And just very quickly, Mr. Baumgarten, when in the event that we are above or right, you know, just above that 40%, there's, there's a number of things where you know, in here that council can choose, and this is more for the benefit of folks who are not looking at this document right now. But there are five options that are outlined there. Now, the first is contributing additional funds to the MERS Employee Defined Benefit Plan. Second, contributing additional funds to other OPAB, other post employment benefit liabilities. Three, to pre-fund or accelerate capital improvements in the CIP by transferring funds to the capital improvement budget. Moving up the debt schedule for existing bond payments to lower the city's debt burden and reducing the mortgage rate. So those are the five things should we find ourselves in a situation where we're right at that 40 mark or a little above that 40 mark. Those are the things that we would then examine in terms of moving that fund balance into what is a more acceptable range for us. Again, the, the point is to be leveraging the resources of the residents. Not just, you know, hoarding them for, for a rainy day, but making sure that we are providing the highest quality services. And making sure that our fund balance stays in a level that our auditors, Plant Moran, are very happy with, which was mentioned early on. And we have that conversation every time we do the budget. Talk about the percentage and where they're comfortable, where they'd like to see us. And for the last few years, certainly, we have been within a range that they are very comfortable with as well. Questions for City Manager on the proposal before us? Councilmember Blanchard?
I think, Your Honor. Matt, has this been reviewed by Plant Moran? Do they make any comments on it?
Yes, sir. They, between the second and third draft, they did make some comments that were incorporated into the final draft here.
Thank you.
Additional questions on our fund balance policy? Mayor Pro Tem Dean?
Thank you, Your Honor. I don't have a question, just a comment that I'm very happy to see this. I know we've kicked this around for a while now, and it's nice to see it before council. And I appreciate all the hard work that's been done bringing this before us. So thank you.
I'll just add on to that, that it's also nice to be in a position to do something like this. There are some municipal who may not be in a position to have the more designated conditions on their fund balance and the levels that it needs to be at. So I appreciate that as well. Councilmember Henan?
Yes, I wanted to also just make a comment and sort of mirror how you had talked if we have a, you know, approaching our maximum fund balance. You know, we have the analogous if we go towards the minimum, you know, where if we get too low, we're going to require a super majority of votes, not just a simple and, and specific steps to rebuild the general fund. So while I think we as an entity have been responsible and we're staying near within towards the high end of our range here. I think it's also good that we have a plan in place so that we aren't making it up on the fly if we get into distress. So yeah, I really appreciate the work that went into this. I think it's a very good direction for the city to go.
And just to finish what Councilmember Henan was just mentioning. So again, as I mentioned before, there are five things when we're approaching. We've got three items when we are not in that 20% where we'd like to be in that minimum. We have options in priority order. You know, making some amendments to pay as you go or the CIP, amending budget to cut general operating expenses and approving a transfer of funds that have been previously moved from general fund to other funds back to the general fund. So as Councilmember Henan mentioned, we not only have what we do when we're too high, but if we're not high enough, what are we going to do? And in order so that conversations will be efficient, everybody's on the same page. And we understand that we need to keep our fund balance in a healthy operating area. Any additional questions or comments? All right. Well, seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on M 2221?
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Turbeck?
Yes. Can we now move on to our second public comments portion of the evening? And this is for items that were not covered on tonight's agenda. Then if you're concerned it's to be addressed by a member of city staff, please email the clerk's office at clerk@berkleymich.net or call the clerk's office at 248-658-3310. If you would like to comment, please raise your hand or use the little raise hand icon down at the bottom. When you speak, please state your name and city of residence. And remember, you will be limited to three minutes.
We do have someone's hands raised. Chris, you have three minutes to speak.
All right. Hello, everyone. Hope everybody's doing all right during this tough time, obviously, here in the state. My name is Chris Copacia. I am a lifelong resident here in the city of Berkeley. And I am just commenting to express my excitement and inform other community members and, and our council here and the mayor that on August 20, or April 27, April 27, the Library of Berkeley will be hosting a presentation about ranked choice voting by the group Rank My Vote, which you can see in this image right here behind me. And so they'll be sharing that with the community. I'm really, really excited about it personally. I think this is really, really important for folks to kind of get a handle on, on understanding this concept. Recently, this is more topical, but Charles Barkley talked a little bit about how there are really great people in this country and that we're unfortunately being pitted against each other by a number of politicians on both sides of the aisle. And it's time that we address the system itself that is causing that problem. So I hope that folks will take the opportunity to go check out the, this event upcoming. Again, go to the library's calendar. It will show up there on, from, on April 27th, from seven o'clock, seven o'clock to eight o'clock. And if you would like more information about ranked choice voting in general, you can go ahead and go, come to this right here, rankmivote.org. And that will be one good way to learn a little bit more about it ahead of time, too. So I hope you all will join me. I will be there for sure. I'm really excited about it. I'm a volunteer for the organization because I'm really excited about this concept and improving our democracy for all of us. So, thanks so much.
You, Ms. Mitchell? Nobody else?
Nope, no one else.
Right. We'll give another minute here just to see if anybody's trying to get on. Nobody's sitting in the waiting room, I assume? Okay. Well, we will close the second public comment section and we will move into communications. Ms. Mitchell, who is up first?
Councilmember Price.
Councilmember Price.
Thank you. Our Citizens Engagement Advisory Committee will meet this Wednesday, and public participation is always welcome. The agenda in Zoom link can be found on the city's calendar. With the proclamation in our consent agenda of volunteer week here in Berkeley, I want to publicly recognize and express my gratitude to the many volunteers who serve our community as members of our boards, commissions, and committees, as organizers of city events, and as active participants in the many volunteer organizations, official and unofficial, that benefit Berkeley. Volunteering looks a bit different this year, and not every volunteer is serving in the ways in which they expected. And I'm grateful especially for everyone who has adapted and innovated in response to COVID and the unexpected challenges it has posed. Thank you all for making Berkeley stronger. And finally, I want to express my heartfelt sympathy to Councilmember Baker, who recently lost his beloved wife Nicole. I know that Mayor Turbeck will share condolences from the city. But I just wanted to say, Steve, I'm, I'm so sorry. Nicole's candor, sense of humor, and fierce love burned bright in our little community, and she is dearly missed. I just want to share her love with you and to all who knew and loved her best. Thank you.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. A couple of things tonight. The Berkeley American Legion just finished a successful Let Fish Fry. Appreciate that. Everybody that attended would like to thank them for that because we're trying to keep the Legion afloat in this pandemic time, and it's, it's been difficult. Legion also sponsors the Navy Sea Cadets. They are having a barbecue dinner on Saturday, this coming Saturday from five to eight. It's a takeout barbecue dinner to raise money for the youth development programs. And the dinner will include pulled pork, bacon, mac and cheese, corn, roll, barbecue sauce, and dessert for $10. And you can order by calling 248-591-9220. Or by going online to Polar Bear Battalion, all one word, dot squared, dot site. The, the name of the unit that Legion sponsors is Navy Sea Cadet, Polar Bear Battalion. So that's where that name comes from. And they're doing a good job assisting Legion and getting trained. So if anybody can support them on Saturday night, $10 barbecue dinner should be pretty good. On the issue of volunteer week, as people are on this call, no, this city couldn't function without the volunteers. We rely on them heavily. And unfortunately, last year or this year, because of pandemic, we haven't been able to do much. Hopefully in the future, we'll be able to have some kind of a volunteer recognition dinner. You know, we haven't had one for a while or overdue. But that's something we need to think about because these people, to be honest, save us in running the city. So it's the least we can do is to do some kind of a recognition for them. And the last thing in, in the area of quotations, and Steve isn't here tonight. In emergency management preparation, one of the quotations that we do here is from Howard Ruff. And he said, "It wasn't raining when Noah built the ark." Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Dean?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just have a couple items for this evening. I too would like to thank all of our volunteers in the city of Berkeley for doing such an incredible job, incredible job in all facets, from events to trees to parks and beyond. Your hard work has not been, has not gone unnoticed, and we truly do appreciate you. Another thank you to everyone who attended the Spring Fling Dance on March 30th. I understand that a good time was had by all, and it's so encouraging to be able to do some things like this in a careful way, but it allows us to come together in community at a safe distance and enjoy each other's company and have a good time. Summer day camp registration is now open, and you can do that at berkeley.maxgalaxy.net. You can also check the website for the outdoor programs. There are many senior programs, adult, youth. Summer specialty camp registration is open, and there are tennis programs as well. I absolutely am not going to read all of the options, but you can check them out online and see what might interest you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Henan?
Yes, I'll also take this opportunity to thank all of our volunteers, echo a lot of the things also already said. But also just the number of people we've had volunteering to volunteer. We've just, with recent vacancies, vacancies over the past couple of years, we have just had way too many people interested. Then we have spots to place them. And so while we can't put everyone, it, it's still appreciated how much interest there is in people helping out the city. The zoning board of appeals, they will meet on Monday, April 12th at 7:00 PM. And they have two cases that night involving variances for additions onto residential homes. And the tree board will not be meeting this month, but their next meeting will be in May. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Planning Commission at the last meeting, there was a presentation on the capital improvement plan and discussion about ordinances that require, excuse me, require special land use approval for office uses on the first floor in downtown, the downtown district. And one that would require special land use for outdoor dining. Both those are currently in place. And so there's discussion about whether any changes want to be made to that. And so it'll hopefully see some language probably at the next meeting. There is a planning commission work session meeting tomorrow, April 6th at 7:00 PM. And the next regular meeting of the planning commission will be at 7:00 PM on April 27th. Master Plan Steering Committee, the virtual open house last month was very good. So thank you to all involved with putting that on. You know, we had over 50 people joining to offer their perspective and breakout groups yielded some really good outcomes to work with. So the next Master Plan Steering Committee meeting will be April 20th at 7:00 PM. And the Environmental Advisory Committee, unfortunately, we weren't able to get a quorum for the March meeting. There is no April meeting. That was pre-planned ahead of time. So the next meeting will be May 20th at 6:30 PM. And lastly, same as my colleagues, you know, I just want to echo a heartfelt thanks to all the volunteers in the city. I really are the backbone of what, much of what we do. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Baumgarten?
I think, Mr. Mayor, I just want to note our, it's the first, first, it's early in the month, so our newsletter just came out. I want to reiterate, it's a great source of information. All of our departments contribute to it, as well as the DDA, the Chamber. It's a great source to know what's happening over the month of April, which is, again, as, as things start to get warmed up a little bit, we're looking for ways to safely deliver services and programs to the Berkeley residents. So it's a wonderful source of information for anybody who's interested. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Stern?
Thank you, Mayor. I've recently advised council or updated council on some recent developments or amendments concerning the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services COVID orders as they relate to meetings of public bodies and commissions, such as our, our city council. And actually, what the state has done is relaxed those restrictions somewhat, which seems more than a little ironic, given our, what seems to be current or new COVID surge. But in view of our city council's recent declaration of a local state of emergency, those changes won't affect us immediately. And hopefully, when it's ultimately determined by council that us immediately, and hopefully, when it's ultimately determined by council that the COVID situation is manageable and we come out of this local state of emergency, those occupancy limitations for council board and commission meetings will be more academic than anything to be concerned about. The only other thing I want to report to council tonight is that is council is aware the the class action litigation involving multiple Oakland County communities relating to the August 2014 storm and basement flooding situation. All the municipalities involved had approved the tentative settlement, including the city of Berkeley, and I want council to know that this coming Thursday, the circuit court is scheduled to consider final approval of the settlement. So if that happens on Thursday, as is expected, then fingers crossed, the settlement will be final, and we will, at long last, the, there's a couple of minor, minor steps after that, but we'll be able to close the book on these cases. It is interesting and somewhat curious, given the tens of thousands of residents involved, spread out over the multiple communities. There were no objections from any of the residents to the proposed settlement terms, and I believe there was only two or three residents who chose to opt out. They just didn't want to participate in it. So that, too, is good news and perhaps further indication that it was a, it's a fair and proper outcome of this long-running litigation. So I will update council, but I am hoping that we'll be able to close the book and close the file on these cases after this Thursday. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Back in 2017, for the first time, city council passed a resolution proclaiming July as sarcoma awareness month, in July 15, as Lio Myo Sarcoma Awareness Day in the city of Berkeley, to encourage increased public awareness and promotion of treatments and recovery. And while we are always eager to increase awareness and support research for causes, this particular cause was different. LMS is very rare. It's malignant, it's aggressive, and it's a subtype of soft tissue sarcoma. It can metastasize to the bones, spine, brain, liver, and is resistant to most forms of treatment. But this particular disease wasn't faceless, at least not for us. One of our own, Nicole Artanowitz, wife of councilmember Steve Baker, was diagnosed with LMS over six and a half years ago. Nicole was as fierce a woman as I've ever met. Honest doesn't quite do justice to how Nicole's view, how she viewed the world, and she never hesitated to tell you how she truly felt. And that tenacity and vigor was on full display as she waged a war against LMS for nearly seven years, far exceeding any projection from those in the medical field. But when you saw Nicole, she never mentioned it, she never complained, she carried herself with grace and elegance. LMS picked the wrong woman to mess with. But in the end, it was simply a war that could not be won. Nick peacefully coasted over the finish line on March 28. And on behalf of council, staff, and administration, I want to express our most sincere condolences to Steve, you know, Dogs, Lola, and Ali. Steve asked me to pass along this message, that he's very grateful for all the kind wishes, positive energy, and support. He knows so many love Nicole, obviously including him, and that means a lot to him right now. And Steve, just as you gave us a message, you gave me a message to pass on, we have a message for you as well. Please let us support you. We're here for you, and you don't have to go through this on your own. And this year, that resolution will be back on our agenda, and the fight against Lio Myo sarcoma will continue. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
Motion to adjourn by Mayor Pro Tem Dean, with support from councilmember Henan. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Turbeck?
Yes. The April 5, 2021 meeting of the 38th Council of the City of Berkeley is adjourned.